At this moment, I think we are recording.
Okay, you record to the cloud and then I can download it sometime in the future.
If I can figure out where it goes, which cloud we're in.
I was wondering, yeah, I look outside, wonder which cloud.
Okay, so I believe we are recording now. And so I want to just give a very brief background on how we're going to approach this. So on the screen right now is a view of the table of contents of the manual that you have had access to. There are four different sections of policy that we have to get through. I don't know if we're going to get through it all today. It depends on how much we need to edit or discuss so that everybody's in full agreement around moving forward. Sections three and four are about the board's work. So we're going to start there today. And hopefully, we'll at least get through those two sections. And then if we have time, then I'd like to go to section two, which is the executive limitations. And these, the executive limitations are basically your concerns, your worries about risk management. And it is about how do you, everything that we say in there is about prudence and ethics. And then, once we finish all of these means policies, the how we're going to do things, then we'll go to ends. So we may need to add another session, but we'll see how everything goes and kind of assess our progress and decide that later on. I am going to start with actually section three, as I mentioned. And so you turn to page 12.
Okay, so I will stop it for a minute. Lynn has to, that's four o'clock, Lynn will call the meeting to order and then we'll.
Okay.
So we're okay with our open meetings.
Okay.
And everybody turn off your phones or silence them or something too? So it's four o'clock. Today is the, you'll look at my agenda. Thursday, June 15th, 2017, it's 4:00 PM. And this is a work session for the Marquette Township Board. We're in the community center. And we're going to be talking about policy governance today. The whole board is in attendance. Maybe just step out briefly, the manager. Uh, we need to have a roll call first.
Yeah, roll call is trustee Wiegert. Trustee LaRue.
Here.
Trustee Martin.
Prision.
Trustee Iverson.
Here.
Treasurer Johnson.
Here.
Clerk Cattarell is here and Supervisor Durant.
Here.
In attendance also is the township manager Randy Gerard, he'll be back in one second. And my deputy clerk Linda Winslow stepped in. She's here and that's who we have.
So the purpose of this, even though public comment is next and Linda's welcome to speak, is to talk about policy governance with Susan Radwan. She is on the line right now. We're connected with computers and video screens and microphones. So she will be the person speaking that you can't see. So Linda, would you like to offer any comment? You're only public unless somebody else comes in. Any board member comment?
None.
No, we're good? Okay. We can begin the discussion on establishment of policy governance and I can turn it over to Susan Radwan.
Thank you, Lynn. So if you could all move to page 12 of the proposed policy manual. As we go through this, I just want to remind you that this manual was originally developed by the township board in 2011. And for some reasons that you all may know, I don't know quite why. But the only thing that was adopted out of this manual was the board code of conduct. What the sections that we're looking at, sections three and four, are all about how the board operates under policy governance. And when I was up there previously, I did a workshop on the principles of policy governance. And those principles that I spoke about are all embedded in the language of these two sections of policy. So I'd like to just kind of go through and let's look at each of the individual policies. And if there are any concerns that you have or anything that you, curiosities that you might have, please bring it forward and we will, as long as everybody is on board and ready to move to the next thing, we'll just keep going through this till we run out of time. So Policy 3.0 is a global policy. It acts like an umbrella to all of the other policies in this section. And the point of this section 3.0 is it identifies who you are acting on behalf of, who the ownership is. As in, you know, it was originally identified as the current and future interests of all residents of the Charter Township of Marquette. Is there any concern that that definition is not appropriate? You recall that, you know, that this is who, this is on whose behalf you are operating. And it's, it is about the long-term people or entities or it is about long-term sustainability and long-term health. We distinguish owners from customers. Customers are those people who are seeking to or are seeking to or are receiving a specific benefit or service from the township. So this is a reference to the ownership. Comment? Hearing none, is there anything that anybody sees that needs to be edited in this section?
We're looking at the whole section?
No, no, just 3.0.
Okay. Nope.
Okay, so what you actually have here in letter A and B in this is the definition of governance. The definition to it, that we achieve what we should and avoid unacceptable situations. So this is a way to express that definition of governance. And so we're identifying that this is what our job is. Okay, moving on to 3.1. Now this 3.1 further defines how you're going to govern. And how you stay in alignment with that ownership group. Um, the ownership group, what they care more about, you know, when they're not acting as a customer, what they really care about is vision, moving forward, where are we going? You know, those are the kinds of things that people who are not customers really, you know, care about. So in 3.1, the broad policy that goes, that's the bulleted list and the short sentence after that. This is the broadest part of 3.1. And everything that goes on beyond that further defines this, you know, those two paragraphs. So is there anything, any concern or curiosity about what's in these two paragraphs? The first two. Can you imagine yourself governing with that perspective? And do you think that there would be any barriers to, you know, to you staying in this perspective? Or at least with, you know, generally in this perspective, an emphasis?
In my notes, Susan's saying that this is generally a five to three-year lookout. We might have just picked that up from last time.
Mm-hmm.
Management is one to two years.
Right. Exactly. So in general, instead of managing Randy, your township manager, your job is to be focused on what's going to be happening and be preparing the township, making sure things are in place so that the township is ready for its next, its next evolution, you know, in the future. So you want to be more outward focused and community focused rather than inside the township focused. That's what the first part of this. And then that future that you just talked about Lynn is the other part of it. Any concerns?
Are you saying, Susan, that we don't really correspond with the manager?
No, I'm not saying that. This is just one part, you know, where your governing is an emphasis on the external world. It's out facing from Township Hall. It's community, it has a community. You are, you're in linkage with the community. That's your primary relationship. And Randy's relationship is important and you will be monitoring his performance. But that's not your only concern. You want to, you want to create a policy in the township. You want to create ends and direction that aligns with your community, the community's value system. So this sets it up where you, you will do a lot more of your governing in connection with the community of owners rather than just Randy. So you become then a partner with Randy, not just the watchdog of Randy.
Does that make sense?
I know. I thought before we said we set up the goals for the manager to follow for the township. And then it's up to him to follow, we monitor his results.
Yes. And that's going to be coming up in the board's job description policy. We define all of that, all of the aspects of your job.
Think what, you know, I guess the point of perspective, what Susan's referring to is as a governing body, as a board, you should be looking at what's happening in the city of Marquette with regard to the development of the hospital and then all of the other developments that they're doing right now, roundabouts and everything else, how that impacts the township going forward and then what you need to do to be prepared.
Really affect you.
Well, no, to make the plan or where's the township going to go in regard to that. What are you going to do donating wise? What do you want to do planning wise? Do you want to change any land use patterns?
Exactly.
Is that fair enough?
Yep, that's exactly right. So a lot more of your time would be focused on that rather than just watching what Randy is doing. Or helping him do his job.
Which then be helpful, but that then just still balance you later when you set your goal.
We okay, can we move on? So, okay, policies 3.11 to the end of this document, or this end of this particular policy number. These 3.11 and 12, 3.12, 13, all further define now what it says in those first two paragraphs. So 311, one of the most critical things is that you pay attention to keeping the board whole. And instead of getting split. So there are some instructions in 3.11 about, you know, how do, that we need to develop a group responsibility and to make sure that the group, the whole board, is responsible for itself. You can't just, you know, if you got somebody who understands finances, they can't just make decisions for the board. It has to be, the whole board needs to be accountable for the work that gets done. So you don't just lay it all on the treasurer. You don't just lay it all on the supervisor. It really is a group function. So that's 311. Any concerns there? 312 focuses on, you know, that your job, the way you're going to direct and control and inspire the organization is to have written policies. And the policies that we're working on are those policies. And the policies, you know, what you're doing with this policy manual is defining the board's values and perspectives. So want to stay focused on the long term, not just short term. And you want to make sure that you're focused on the external world that's impacting the township rather than just on the administrative and programmatic parts of your township. Any concerns there? Hearing none? Moving on. On 3.13, basically you're making a commitment to govern with excellence. And so it defines some of the disciplines that you're going to be paying attention to. A lot of this stuff, you know, is, you know, you could find in Robert's Rules of Order. But, or and I should say, it is a commitment to really govern well. And it also, I called your attention to the last sentence that, you know, the board, you can change these policies anytime you want to, but while they are in place, you will abide by them. And if you will have a formal way of changing policy, you can't just decide, well, we're not going to do that. I don't want to do that. So it is a group's decision about changing policies. That is, one of the key jobs of the board is policy development. So that one, it continues on with 3131. And so in order to stay focused on the policies, you don't want to just throw policies up and then you have this scattering, the scatter shot approach to developing policy. Kind of like the way school boards do. This, there is a discipline in how you tackle issues. So one of the first things that you do is to decide whose issue is this that's coming before you? Is it really the board's or have you delegated that thing, that issue to the township manager? Is it operational in nature? And have you delegated the authority to make that decision to the township manager? So when you ask this question first, if it is the township managers, if you've already delegated that to the township manager as an operational issue, then the board doesn't have to deal with it. Randy's got to deal with it. Randy Gerard, you know, because as part of his operational means. So the board then has a way to preserve its time to work on the things that really belong to the board. And so if you decide, you know, is this the board's issue? Then yeah, you go ahead further on it. And then you look at what you've already said about the issue so you don't make duplicate policy. And maybe what you've said is enough. If it's not, you can always add policy. But ultimately, you want to stop making policy when you can accept the reasonable, any reasonable interpretation of Randy. So there's an instruction here on letter C on how you would go about that. And then 3.1.3.2 basically is saying, you know, we got to, we got to figure this out first before we jump in and talk about it. Let's decide whether this is really our issue or not before we jump in and talk about it. So this, this little piece has some big, big implications for how you process stuff during your board meetings or moving into a board meeting. So at one point with these questions, in the back of the manual that you have, we created a form that if anybody wants to add something to the agenda, and the form is in appendix C if you, if you want to flip back there. So if you want to put something on the agenda, you think through these questions before you bring it forward to the supervisor and to, you know, make sure that you've actually thought it through and it really does belong to the board. And that makes it for a very, a much more efficient process. Yes.
And this.
Go ahead.
Whether it's board business or not.
Right, yeah, that's the key question. If it's something that you've, if it's an area that you've already delegated to Randy, let's just say it's about a public service request. Comes to you for some reason. And you got your public service staff on it. Whatever the issue is, it's not exceeding some limits that you have created in your executive limitations. This, we just, you know, this is just something that's happened around the public, the public service piece. And, you know, does it really belong to the board? Or is this something that is in the township manager's? Should the department be taking care of it? Does the board really need to be involved? So that's the question that, that is, you ask yourselves first. I mean, Robert's Rules even says the board should not be talking about anything that does not belong to the board. It should not be talking about board business. So this kind of flushes that out a little bit.
Susan, a question, I forget exactly where, what I was reading, but if two or more board members want something on the agenda, they can put that on the agenda. So only if it goes to the board first, you're saying?
Um, I would suggest to you that, you know, the two or more members would probably want to fill out this form in appendix C, you know, to move it forward.
I don't think it's ever happened, but I know I was reading it.
Well, and I've mentioned to you guys numerous times, you know, if there's something you want to talk about, that's why we mentioned it in the forum discussion. If something can bring up, you can let me know if we have to get information from Randy or details or statistics or something so we have some notice, but anytime.
They can bring it up. But this being in place gives you the opportunity and the rest of the board members to say, that's not our, that's not for us to deal with.
Right.
That's a key. That's what, that's what, that's what this is all about. Is to give you the key to either take action or say the action is not ours to take. Or if somebody wants to go further with it, you can say, well, we can monitor whether or not who we delegated this to is conducting it properly or not. But that's the only question you got. Until you clear that up, it isn't an issue to be discussed.
So in the future, you might have that. Yeah, in the future, you might have somebody come out and say, well, it says this and this and that's why you wanted to ask a question.
Yeah.
There are also understated statues. If you go back and see what it is, if two board members want it on the agenda and they both sign it, you send it to the supervisor, it will be on the agenda.
That's why I referenced this here.
That's how we're doing it now.
And I would suggest though, that if, you know, two or more members, you know, to go through this process though, so everybody's clear, so you can jump right into the conversation. You know, this is like the homework to kind of set it all up. This is what we've already said. This is what the limitations are. Do we need to say anything more about this? Do we need to further discuss it? This is also a really good way to control personal agendas. Um, you know, where if you get somebody, you know, in the future on the board who runs for the board because of a personal agenda, they just simply want their garbage picked up in a, you know, more frequently or whatever. That's totally an operational thing. And by using this kind of process to say, is this board work or is this the township manager's work? It allows you to move very quickly from those personal agendas that are really customer issues versus board issues.
Amen.
Everybody okay with this?
So Ernie, I know from talking to you before, you, you have doubts about this. So chime in when something hits your craw that you're not comfortable with.
I was going to say two or more members could agree to take some of the stuff off, eliminate 10 o'clock meetings.
I think you, you still can. What, you know, what Susan's talking about is if you've got two or more board members that want an item, they go to appendix C and answer these questions and see if it's even a board issue. And if it's not, then it doesn't go on the agenda. It gets referred to whoever is delegated the authority to want it. If the answer to those is yes, then it goes on the agenda.
Well, I just wanted to bring up that green light the other morning, the other night, whatever. That's what happens, you don't see.
What they're referring to, Susan, is the old existing policy manual have that policy in it.
Okay. Well, I mean, there is nothing to say that an individual can request something to be on the agenda. Um, and if, you know, anybody can put anything on the agenda, but if you do this process, you know, early, you know, the first time it appears on the agenda, you may decide, you know what? It's not board work, we're not going to talk about it.
It gives you a purpose test. That's what it does.
Yeah.
That's all it does. And with the purpose test, you can, you can, you can discuss as a group whether you want to go forward or not.
And it, it should be up to the group to decide whether we're going to discuss something or not. And even Robert's Rules allows for that.
And then Susan, also, I think this appendix C, if you do have a legitimate concern and some emergency concern, you can add it at the board meeting with some documentation of why it needs to be added.
Exactly. Exactly. Everybody okay? Moving on? Hearing nothing? Okay, policy 314. This is something that you've actually started doing it. But it does require, you know, being intentional. That, you know, they're really doing governance this way. It's easy to start sliding backwards, doing things the way you've always done them rather than the new way. Um, so there's a need here for continual board development that includes orientation of new board members, particularly in the processes that we're talking about right now. And every once in a while, checking on, are you doing what, you know, is there a way that we can improve? In fact, I do think that it is important for the board to, to do a self-assessment on a regular basis. Uh, maybe not at every meeting, but at a regular basis. Because that's your only way of doing process improvement. By looking at what, you know, is this working for us? How can we tweak it and get better at it? Rather than just letting things happen and not ever commenting. So a big part of policy governance is recognizing, first of all, that the board is account is totally responsible for its own job design, job development, job performance and job discipline. And so this, you know, a periodic board discussion of process improvement is, you know, it takes that to, let's keep working and get better and better at governance rather than, you know, flounder or not be really doing the best job possible for this, the residents of the township. So that's 314. 315 is an interesting one. Uh, the board will allow no officer, individual or committee of the board to hinder or excuse, be an excuse for not fulfilling its commitments. This one, you know, a lot of times in board work, people leave it up to the supervisor that if something's going wrong or somebody's not doing what they should be doing, it's like, well, we're waiting for the supervisor to step in and take care of it. Well, in a policy governance board, the supervisor's job is about assuring integrity of governance. But the board itself has a responsibility that if there's something not going the way it should be in the meeting, you have every opportunity to say something about it. And say, you know, let's get back on track. This is not on our agenda. You know, we're spending way too, but we're in the weeds right now. You have the ability to do that. And it's kind, this particular one is kind of like a point of order. Uh, in Robert's Rules, it's a similar, it's a similar concept. Uh, but it really does put the responsibility on all of the board members, not just your supervisor, to keep things moving in the, in the direction of productivity and, and excellence in governing. And 316 is about how you're going, you know, the self-monitoring that I just talked about. Um, so it identifies that you will do that. Uh, 317 is about transparency. Uh, refers to open meetings. And specifically, the, the language that's in yellow. The board at the time that looked at this in 2011 really felt strongly about, you know, being more articulate about transparency. So those paragraphs and that are in yellow on your form, those were added by the previous board. They are not part of the overall template of policies that a lot of boards begin with. They are not part of the overall template of policies that a lot of boards, uh, begin with. So, uh, anything in this entire, uh, 3.1, this is about your governing style. Um, how you're going to go, how you're going to approach governing, uh, and how, you know, what's important as you govern in this, in this way. Any thoughts, concerns, edits you want to make? Put it out there. 3172. Yeah?
I'm not sure what, I, I may know what that refers to from 2011. I don't know that even six years later that this is as appropriate as it might have been then. Because technology has changed so much, you know, and in order for me sometimes to contact everybody, I'm texting them that they have an email that they have to look at.
Right.
Get everybody. So I don't know, this might be a little bit more confining now than it was back then.
Well, yeah.
Connect, you know, and I, I, maybe we need to hone it in a little bit more to say what's appropriate at this level and what isn't.
Yeah, I think the intent of that particular one, 3172, was that because of Open Meetings Act, there were, um, there were times when the board was discussing issues on email. So it, you know, so Lynn, you might have put something out there and then Ernie would respond and then Randy would respond, you know, and it became a discussion that was not open to the public. So it was believed that that was a violation of Open Meetings Act because the public did not have access to that. It's a different thing when you put something out and it's an announcement and there's no intention of having back and forth discussion about the issue. It's when, if, this is more about discussing issues online rather than, you know, because the public does not have the opportunity to see that.
So we have a, a definition of deliberations maybe to consider or, or stating that there is never going to be a reply all to an email, something like that. Giving opinions, however we want to clarify this, I don't think it, I don't think it should be removed. I think it needs to be honed a little bit better to, to be more specific. And I know policies in this format with policy governments are supposed to be dumberal, but this is an OMA violence violation, so we, I think we need to be a little more specific.
Isn't the Open Meetings Act restricted to? It, it doesn't say you cannot have a discussion between two members. What it says is you can't have a discussion amongst a body of members that would in, in fact then be a violation of the Open Meetings Act.
But you can take it a little bit further because you and I can have a conversation. But then you broach with Dave and Dan and it, and then Dan talks to Ernie and then you still have that same deliberating thing. Once you say, I believe or I think, you know, now you're giving an opinion and you're deliberating. So even though it's just two to begin with, send it to the next one or the next one.
But if you were sending everything to all of us?
That's different.
And say, do not reply to all, and if I can answer you.
Yes.
Well, if he doesn't, then to Randy, they're not violating the law because it's between them two. You can't control everything. As long as we don't as a whole agree, you know, I don't know, that's, that's what you're going for.
But it could still be four. You couldn't end up with four deliberating about the same topic. That's what we want to prevent.
Not in a common meeting.
No, no. We're talking about emails.
That's what they did in Marquette. That's how they get into so much trouble.
Right.
Because if they actually had a meeting of people to decide how they could deal with something and then they acted in, in accord. But I think personally, I think this thing, it'd get you into more trouble than it's worth. I think they ought to delete it.
Well, I would think the intent there is, is everybody keeps coming up with a deliberating portion or expressing an opinion. To make an announcement is one thing, but to deliberate an issue or express an opinion on it, that could be a board agenda is what that's prohibiting.
Well, and yeah, where, where this will most likely come up will be prior to a board meeting where new information on an item comes up and it gets sent out at the joint email as information only, you know, and you're not really discussing or deliberating. And this will be coming up at the meeting and yours and additional information. Now, that's, that's just sharing of information, that's not really deliberation. Which I was talking about is in an area where you intentionally utilize email to avoid the open discussion, you know, and in that particular case, they send emails to individual people and ask for an opinion and then compile those opinions.
Right.
I guess what I'm, what I'm referring to is, is something that's, that is an agenda item or could potentially be an agenda item and one board member sends out an email to another board member expressing an opinion on that topic.
That's deliberation.
Uh, whether I answer it or not, that's still deliberation.
It is the cause of joy.
So state in this one what you can use it for. Email among board members will only be used for information or whatever.
So take, take a look at the language that I, I, um, added while you were deliberating there. Um, so what I added was email used for deliberation of issues among board members will not be used. And email may be used for announcements to the board.
But it's more than announcements, they're also sending out, um, background, background information.
Usually that comes from me.
Probably when you get more.
Usually from staff when that happens. And you really want that. I need to be on the agenda or some additional information to come up today or something like that.
How about, how about if you said you didn't have this file, you didn't have this bar saying you cannot use email? Just say you have to be constantly aware of the Open Meetings Act. If you say it that way, then they have to know that they can't share things back and forth.
But everybody isn't top-notch on the OMA either.
Well, they damn well better be.
But this, you got to think about the next board, too, because this is giving them direction.
I know, but you can't, you can't guide them all the way. They, they need to know what the Open Meetings Act is all about. They need to read up on that and then they need not to violate it. And if you do that, then you don't need all of this. I think you're going too far.
Now, could it, could it be worded, simply saying to assure compliance of the Open Meetings Act, no emails will be responded to by board members?
Well, but this, you want, you really want that?
Well, as long as you start responding back and forth, you've got an arguable deliberation among board members. Again, it's, the problem, problem with it is, is that everybody's relying now on social media. I mean, that's, that is your primary communication source.
And that's just email you're talking about.
I was going to say.
Instagram, Snapchat, photos, Facebook, it's everything.
Right.
I would think if you just change that email use for deliberation, uh, or, um, something to do with the expression of specific opinions of issues among board members. And I, I see that's the only two issues there is, is actual deliberation or just the fact that someone would send something out expressing an opinion on a given subject.
And you know, once you start using email, people can take those emails and they can become you and there's a whole bunch of things that come along with email use. Yeah. Electronic communication can, is really what it, if the electronic.
They're having meetings through email.
Right. Oh, absolutely. Yeah, that's better.
Um. 44. Is that better?
Yeah. That shouldn't be.
Yeah, that's.
Let me, I got to take this out here.
Electronic media will not be used to express personal. Or, 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 you, this is among board members.
Okay.
Announcements or background.
I think so is an email may be used for announcements or, uh, background information or agenda items to the board.
Like an email you text.
Yeah. We just change that to electronic.
Switch that to electronic.
Electronic media or email.
Okay. Is that all right?
Yeah, it looks better to me.
Yeah, just, um, another thought about the electronic media, uh, why you definitely might not want to do it. Because if the board's going to have a discussion, it, everybody on the board has to be there in real time and has to be able to hear each other. And not everybody is checking their email every day. Not everybody has the same access and so it leaves people out of the loop. So you want to make sure that you preserve your discussion time when everybody is, um, in the loop.
Now, that doesn't mean that we're restricted from going up to Dan and saying, hey, in a discussion that you, we had at the last board meeting, you said such and such. Can you clarify that? You voted such and such. I want to know, I'm, I'm curious as to why you voted that way. Do you have this information? I don't, or something like that.
Uh, you got to do that during the meeting.
Yes.
No, because two board members can have a conversation.
Right. But, but here's, but the thing is, okay, so we, the next one, 31721, says that you can submit questions by email to the township manager, you know, in order to get clarification on issues. But Lynn, when you, if you approach somebody who voted in a way different than you, it could be perceived as badgering. It could be perceived in a lot of ways that you never intend. But if, so you got, you know, you really want to get that kind of clarification. Uh, actually, it should be done before you even take the vote, not after the fact. Because after the fact, it's too late.
But you don't know how they're voting yet.
Well, there are ways to figure that out.
I've never heard anybody say in any of my MTA meetings, two board members without a lot to have a conversation.
Not saying that. I'm not saying, but, but electronic conversation is a different thing. And it, you can't, the, because the media does not allow you to see body language or voice inflection, there's so many opportunities to misinterpret what's actual, what, what the intent of the message is. And that can create some real difficult interpersonal stuff that's not going to be helpful to you as a, as a board. So if, you can have that conversation, but I just wouldn't do it on email. Do it by phone. You know, remember that, you know, if you do anything on, on, uh, on the electronic media, it's foible.
Right.
And that, that has other implications for you as well.
Well, and that's why I mentioned to some of the board members that having their, their email forwarded from the township computer address to their own compromises their own computer now.
Yep.
If they don't care about that, that's fine. But now you've taken your personal computer and compromised it. Uh, should there be some kind of a FOIA on your discussion? You may be innocent anyway, but that still means your computer's going to be.
So is everybody okay with the way, uh, 3172 has now been edited?
I'm, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I would change 31721 and get rid of email and put electronic media.
Okay. I think this document was converted from, um, uh, a PDF file because it's not playing well with me. You know? Okay. Done. Moving on? Okay. 3.2 is the board's job description. And basically, in this, you know, there are three things that you have a responsibility to create, direct responsibility. One of the. Yep, yep.
Uh, back on 3171, I'm assuming that the definition of significant expenses have been vetted someplace?
It will be in the, um, uh, in the executive limitations for sure.
Okay.
Okay?
No.
Okay. I think what's more important on that, in that particular one, is that you're going to disclose how you made the decision to award the contract. It is about the disclosure of your decision-making process. That's the, that's the critical aspect of that particular policy. So people understand that this decision was not made behind closed doors with undue influence. Okay?
Yes.
Moving on. Um, okay, for job description, you have three job descriptions. One of them is to link with the owners or that ownership, which we define as the current and future, you know, residents of, of the township. Uh, the second one is to develop written governing policy. That's 322. And 323 is to assure org, uh, successful organizational performance. Um, I do have one key, one thing that I would like to suggest is that we, um, eliminate uh, this last phrase here on, because the ends and executive limitations are only about the operational organization, but if the board's not doing its job, then, I mean, you do have a direct responsibility to assure that you're not undermining performance. And if, so by not doing what you said you were going to do in these policies that can impact performance. So I would recommend that we delete, uh, the words on ends and executive limitations. Is that okay?
I don't have a problem with that. It seems, yeah.
So, and there is a, there is a very specific, uh, process that we use to assure this performance. It's the monitoring process. And, uh, that's addressed in, uh, the Section 4 Policies, which we'll get to tonight. But you'll notice here, this sets up the four different policy types in, in number 322 and the lower level policies. Um, it clearly defines, you know, what you are accountable for or, or responsibility to create as a governing body. Any concerns about this? So in that earlier question about why aren't we going to be monitoring Randy's performance? Yes, you are, and this is where it says you will. This is, this is the first part of it. There's a, there's a whole other policy around that. Good, good to move on? Okay, 3.3, this is the Board Member Code of Conduct, and I believe you have already approved this. Uh, as far as your.
I did just email you a copy of the approved with the documentation approval.
Okay. So what I will do then is make sure that whatever is already approved, we'll just put it in here. Make, so that if you did edit anything, we will continue with what you've already approved. Okay?
Yeah, because these are dated, right? Each time you amend them or change them or delete them?
Um, I have not mastered that, um, that function. Usually I don't have to worry about that because it, it becomes the work of your clerk.
Randy does that.
He'll take care of it.
We'll take care of it, Susan.
All righty, Randy, thank you. So I need to substitute. I'm making a note for myself. Okay. Um, I, just as a point, though, of, of information, this policy identifies, uh, what would be considered conflicts of interest and, uh, and how we will, will deal with, with conflicts of interest. Um, it also gets into what your authority is, is as an individual rather than as a trustee. Um, so it's an important concept to observe and also with your relationship with the press. Okay, moving on, since you've already adopted that one. Um, we've got the annual and meeting agenda planning. So one of the things in, in this, this is, I think, is important to, to. So, one of the things in, in this, this is, I think is important to, to have a little bit of discussion about. One of the things that is important around policy governance, and it is a choice, but it really helps to remember that you're doing policy governance. And we do things a little differently than the average bear by what, how your agenda is formatted, your, your meeting agenda. And so I have never been and not, and have never been a fan of the agendas that are about new business, old business, because you never get to the future. You can just be on a gerbil wheel with new business, old business. And it's always, or it's never really about the big hairy stuff that you really need to be talking about with the future. So in policy governance and in this policy, it does a couple of things. First of all, it identifies that on, on annual basis, you as a board are going to think about your, your own, your own annual work plan. This is not the annual work plan of the township. It is, in fact, what you as a board are going to tackle this year. So it's a big hairy topic that you really need to talk about, but you never really seem to have time. And you as a board decide what that is together. And then you, you know, and you kind of chunk out the discussion, you know, a piece of the discussion at subsequent meetings. You all decide what it is you, you want to learn, you need to learn about that topic in order to speak to it in an informed way. And ultimately, whatever that explora, exploration is, it could result in a change of policy or an additional policy. So, for instance, if you, I don't know what that big hairy thing might be. It might be expansion, well, you just, you just expanded the fire department, right? So it might be, oh, you know, how retail has, is completely changing and what kind of impact does that really have on township, on your township? It could be something like that, that's really big and broad, external related. Or it could be, you got to put in a new sewer system and we really need to explore that. I mean, it could be some major project that you really need to get a handle on as well. So in this annual meeting agenda, that's what is described in the first policies. And then the meeting agenda is down in 3.4.7. And this is a suggested, this is purely a suggestion. I think it helps you stay on track. But this would be, this agenda is based on the board's work rather than the format of new business, old business reports. What do you think?
I like it. I hate new business, old business. I like how... What I'd like to see though, too, is conjunction with this is a calendar. And I'm thinking the May wouldn't be as effective as maybe right after or around the budget. Plan out what we're going to do for the next year. What are the hot topics? Maybe some of the managers' goals and objectives. Maybe we work in tandem with that or, or we, you know, I don't, I don't know. We can try to connect with the business community maybe and have our meeting with them then and see what, what we want to try to look at. But I think we, calendar, I think we need to have some structure that points to by this time, we're going to talk about this. Or at this particular meeting, we need to meet with the Chamber of Commerce or MAPS or, you know, something like that.
Right, so the, the reference to May is, I think it was based on when your budgeting actually begins. So Randy, Gerard, when does the budgeting cycle begin for you?
January 1st. No, actually, realistically, we, we start the budget in late May, which we've already done. And we usually get it to the board by August, early September, as a recommended budget.
Yeah.
We go through that in-house, but we pretty much have to wait for at least the June 30 closing.
Okay. So that, the cycle will conclude each year on the last day of May was to, so that if the board was going to decide to, to study anything, and if that study was going to require you to bring somebody into Marquette and there was a cost to it, that cost would need to be planned for in the budget. And it would be considered as the cost of governance. So it's part of the board's budget versus the operational budget. And so the timing of this cycle is, is to, you know, to basically respect the, the budget process, timing. But Lynn, to your point, when you decide what the agenda is, what is, what is our annual work plan? What is it that we really want to discuss or get our, wrap our arms around? Once you decide that, then perhaps a task force of the board would figure out the curriculum. So at our July meeting, we're going to meet with the Chamber of Commerce. We're going to, you know, and then in September, we're going to meet with the college and, you know, so whatever the, you know, those meetings that are driven by the topic are, would be figured out once you decide what the topic is that you want to do, you want to explore.
But also, what you're really talking about is short and long-term planning and that. And that all figures in once you start laying out some of these plans and that you have, short-term, long-term, it figures into your budget cycle, short and long-term on that.
Yep.
Are you going to accomplish some of this stuff and that too, though. So in reality, what you're talking about is the first, first half of the year, basically, starting in January, you should be doing your strategic planning sessions in January. You have those strategic planning sessions wrapped up by the end of February, so you can plug those into the budget.
Really, so you have the information to see what direction you should be going and that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but now you've lost the first quarter. That's why I said if we try to do it, and I'm, that, maybe that's too much for the budget.
But you're talking about for the following budget. You're talking about for the next, for January.
If we look at it, when we're doing the budget, we know what our plan is going forward. So you do 15 months ahead of time of, well, not 15, but it would involve those 15 months.
But once you've been through this cycle here, then you're starting another cycle and you're looking at what your previous cycle is, where you're at, how, how much you accomplished or that, and where you're at. And as you work on the next cycle through there. So these things will start wheeling back and forth and that.
It's almost like painting a bridge, mashing a bridge. When you get done, you come back and start over again. You know, that's what it seems to be.
But I think, if I heard Lynn, I think your point is, is that when we're in budget session and we're finishing it up for one year, we know then what we did not attend to. And that's, that's what can get started early on in the, in the following year. And I think it should be. And, and, and we should, because that's when it's fresh in our mind about what we didn't deal with that we want to deal with.
And then we set the calendar.
That's, well, but, but it, but, and I think, and Ernie's right, too. It's, it's both short-term and long-term. But it's also one other thing. It's the unexpected that comes up. And that needs to be early on in the year, too. And let me give you one example of that. We've got the Native Americans involved now, coming up, and what they're looking at. And we should be dealing with that right now because it's, we need, we need to have a session where this group, and this group alone decides what it is that we want to ask for assistance on. Not anyone else, but this group. And we should be doing it early on. We should decide what it is that we're going to put on our list of things that, this is first, this is second, this is third, and we are who you deal with. So there's three things we need to do with early on in the year.
Yeah, it's crazy, so I, we need a whole separate meeting on that.
Lynn, Lynn, one of the things that I, I would suggest as supervisor is that you have a spreadsheet with all of the meetings that you're going to have during the year, the workshop meetings as well as the business meetings. And you plot out at different levels, you know, okay, what's going to happen? So let's say you've got the, you've got the budget cycle. So you know you have to do certain things by, by May. So you kind of, that's your deadline. So you back up and you put whatever piece of the budget that you're going to be working on in the appropriate month. And then you, you know, and so once the board decides on what's the annual plan of work, and I do want to emphasize that this annual plan of work is what the board is going to do, not what you're going to delegate to Randy to do. This is very specifically what the board's plan of work is. And it includes, you know, so what's the one thing that you really want to wrap your, your head around? So maybe this year, it is about the Native American relationship. I don't know. You know, a couple of years ago, it was about the fire service and the fire station and, you know, locations. You know, every year, you've got something that you really got to struggle with and figure out. And so this plan of work is, is agreeing, this is, this is the big thing that we really want to accomplish this year as a board, that will ultimately likely end up in impacting your policies and your budget and everything else at the end of that exploration. This is a real, this is a real key thing because that, usually that work plan is out-facing, not necessarily just, you know, doing something that's operational that you would have been doing anyway. It's, it's, it's something that's more external to the township hall operations.
But also, when you talk about board, board direction, that, that direction also starts filtering down to operations.
Yeah.
That, so whatever we do on board, what we perceive through the future, where we want to go, how's that going to affect the operational?
Exactly, exactly.
And it helps to have consensus early. That's what you get out of this, get together early on in the year. Get the consensus so that you can drive forward trying to reach those goals that are agreed to.
Exactly.
And that all brand new six months into the year.
So the other thing that this allows you to do is to be proactive. So your board meetings would be, really, a lot of it would be focused on proactive stuff rather than reactive stuff. Because when you're, when you focus on, if everything is reactive, you really don't have any systems to move forward. You're always just, you know, playing pinball. You know, whatever, whatever hits, boom, we're going to deal with it. But this gives you a way to address things from a proactive place, which will make you a far more effective governing body. So in general, are we okay with the, the content of 3.4?
How does everybody feel about the, shall we, when Randy gets back, the agenda idea? We talked about it a little bit before changing it up. Are we kind of all in agreement that that's something we want to look at?
Let's take a look at it and just put a sample out there and just see what, how it looks.
I would suggest that you pilot it for like three months. You can, you know, really kind of see how it works for you. And, and then evaluate, you know, is this, is this working for us or not? It's kind of hard to imagine. And because it's a pretty different agenda, you might need to try it out a couple of times.
Randy, we'll throw this around and see what, you know, because Retari knows kind of what he needs to have to get all this done. And so does Randy, so we can chew on it, not for this agenda, but the next one maybe, and just see where, how that would fit in. Tried doing a sample one once, but it was, it was rough because I already had the, the first one established.
Yeah, and I, I would be more than happy to help, you know, help you construct using this kind of format, to take your, your, you know, the things that you know you have to do on the agenda and kind of assign them to these places just to, you know, to, to illustrate, to see if it's going to work for you.
Okay.
It is different.
Yes, it is. You know, although that, so I just want to point out, so like, do you use a consent agenda now?
Yes.
Okay, so that won't change. But the ownership linkage, you know, that's also a great opportunity for people to bring up anything that they've heard, you know, from members of the community that have, that should be called to the board's attention. You know, it's a natural place that, you know, just kind of have an open, you know, what have you been hearing from the community? Is in addition to what, you know, if you're going out and asking the community about the thing that you're studying for your annual plan of work.
Already, Susan.
Pardon?
Who has done this already?
Oh, God. You talking about townships that have done this?
Pardon me?
You talking about townships or organizations?
You know, townships have done something like this.
Um... Well, currently, um, let me just think about this. So Meridian Township outside of Okemis did this for years and they, they don't, any, they don't do it any longer. They had a change in supervisor and township manager, and they've gone in a different direction. But they did this for years.
But well, Meridian, whatever they do.
Susan, keep, the, the question is good, but the point is, probably two-thirds of the other townships need only once a month.
Yep.
So it's, their agenda is going to be different.
Right. But, you know, this agenda also works for organizations that, you know, that does, the frequency doesn't necessarily matter.
Then it don't change for, if you're one or two months, the meeting.
Right. I got boards that use this agenda of meeting quarterly. Yeah.
You've got a few other things in there. Well, financial's part of consent.
But, you know, you got, you know, any ordinances that you have to approve and things like that that would go under assurance of organizational performance because that's the place, either, if it doesn't go under the consent agenda, it would go under that, that operational, that operational side, which is number seven on this list. And so...
These are, is a better explanation of what these things are.
Yeah.
What they refer to. So we know what goes where.
Yep.
Example.
The assurance of organizational performance would be your, those are your action items. They're really thinking, taking action on setting direction.
Have you sent her our current agenda and have her put it into this? Yeah, I mean, I could send it to her, but that's my idea to put it in here. Yeah, can you do that, Susan? If they send you our current agenda, can you reformat that agenda into your?
I could. I think it's more, it, it, I think it would be more illustrative if we took the, I, I, specifically the agenda items that you have and where they would fall on this kind of an agenda.
Yeah.
And, but this also adds some elements that you don't have on your usual agenda. You know, particularly that board of, of the annual plan of work, the policy development, you know, and how you're going to be proactive in developing policy. So there are going to be some things on here that you, your current agendas probably won't be addressing very much in the, you know...
Some examples of what would fit in that they would have a better understanding. I think, looking at, I'm lost, and I ensure other people are lost. Because currently, they don't even address some of the things on here.
Right.
I mean, I haven't...
I was thinking, try and make this merge into our current agenda. I think the one thing that's going to be really obvious is how many operational issues we have in our current agenda.
Yeah.
That really don't belong there. And I think everybody gets a little nervous about just making the leaf and starting to use this because we're not really... use this because we're not really comfortable with it. But I think until you actually make the leap and start doing it.
Try it out.
I think you're just going to be a little gun shy. And you're going to try and gradually work toward it over a period of time, which is just going to add to the confusion, I think. I think Lynn's got a good idea. If you just take a current agenda, see what it'd look like in this format, and then sit and laugh at yourself about all the operational issues that are in there that really don't need to be there, and just start using it.
I already sent it off to you.
Okay, perfect.
So tell me who is using this? You said you have other organizations. Who is using this?
Well, in Marquette, actually, there's quite a few. Your food co-op is using the policy governance. The energy options organization has just adopted policy governance, and they're moving into it. You have, so there is some activity in Marquette specifically. And around the state, I mean, it's really all over the place.
Well, here we could talk to someone from the food co-op somewhere.
Yes, yes. And I would encourage you to talk to the CEO of, the executive director, Matt Gujon.
But I'm looking for a township to have done it.
Okay, well, okay, Michigan, first of all, MTA, I know MTA's not a township, but MTA just adopted policy governance as their way of operating. So in the township world, I have worked with a number of townships, actually. Grand Blank Township, you know, we did extensive education. They have not formally adopted it yet, but they've shown a lot of interest.
I thought Union Township had.
Yeah, yeah, Union Township uses it, definitely. Thank you. Having trouble just remembering in a moment. I'm getting old.
Using it in their agenda.
Meridian, both have done it last month.
We have, and Meridian dropped.
Yeah, they did. You know, but there are cities that are, there are cities around the country that are using this. There are governmental agencies. Most of them, many of the mental health authorities around the state use this. You know, and it's, it is widely used with governmental type entities like the mental health authorities and other, the county road commission self-insurance fund does.
But Susan, when you're talking about all these different things, who'd use it? We're gearing just the agenda part right now.
Yeah.
Who's using the agenda? And that would have been the question.
I think Union Township does.
No, I just pulled it up.
No, they don't? Okay. I can't tell you that, because I'm not, you know, currently engaged with them, so.
Couldn't we just move on to something else?
Sure.
I mean, we're spending an awful lot of time with the agenda.
Well, it's a good deal. I mean, that's what drives our meetings.
Well, our meetings aren't that awkward.
No, but I will tell you, the agenda construction is also what's going to drive your ability to sustain the practice of policy governance.
But I might, here, put this on the back, right, too, Randy and the men talk about it, and you want, and we can come back to this.
Yep. I would suggest that I play with the agenda that Lynn just sent me and show you what it would look like in this format. And before you actually approve policies, if you are inclined to do so, that we revisit this and either change the language so it's more self-explanatory, or you make a different decision about the meeting agendas themselves. Again, this is a practice, this is, I just found this very helpful for people who are practicing policy governance, to keep them on track and focused on what the board's real job is. But I'll work on that. Come at 11. Policy 3.5. This is something that was added for, specifically for community linkage and, you know, that ownership linkage concept. So this is defining what the board's role is with all of those groups, and how you're going to do, or how you are kind of set up to do that ownership linkage. So, you know, you got meetings with your commissions and boards. You got, you're going to name liaisons. You're going to meet with the school boards on an annual basis. And, you know, you're going to eventually be in contact with your local legislators. So that's part of what your ownership community linkage is about, is going to be happening. Any concerns about that? So it says that you're going to do, you're going to host a meeting annually with these key groups.
Other builders, the developers, the getty guys.
Maybe.
With the builder association. And then I'm in, I do a liaison.
Maybe that's all one planning.
Oh.
I don't know.
You're talking about future, isn't it? They're on the cutting edge of that.
But then the planning commission would come back to us with something. That's why we're not using our committees, I think, properly.
So you're saying that you would encourage your planning commission to meet with outside entities, just like your board? That could be an assignment, you know? Not just meet with them, have the representatives from the business association union or the builder association come to the meetings, have a workshop?
Well, the whole thing feels more proactive and more visionary to me than what I've experienced, you know? And who's making that happen? Who are the owners and who's making that happen? Mo, Swick, and then Overstar, Martha Current, and the guys like that are bottom name, and those dudes are doing stuff.
A lot of those guys are coming to the planning meetings, the few that I've been to, years first, you know?
Only when they got problems.
Yeah, but there's, one, didn't say words. He didn't have anything on the agenda. He just wanted to know. He saw something on the agenda that sparked his interest, and he just showed up. Because I asked him, I said, what's your issue? And he said, nothing, just came to see what was going on.
You know, it's a good thing, what happened is, it's a good thing to set up meeting with, what I, like I did, I sat down and swaddled him on that, and just talked about market colony and townships and stuff like that. And I think it was a pretty productive, from my standpoint, to see where they're coming from and what's in line for the future that they're looking at.
Susan, would it be fair to characterize this section as more of an internal meeting structure?
Well, this doesn't include meeting with the, you know, the community residents, like the chamber of commerce and that, which would be more of a function of your annual plan of work. But one of the reasons why this was determined to be important is because you do have limitations on how much you can influence your zoning board of appeals and, you know, these various groups. So to meet once a year with them and share your vision, share where you're going, what are your critical strategic objectives, and to share, you know, where are they going? And the more you can share, you know, that strategic future, the more communication and alignment you have, and the community begins to work together. So it is a very proactive way to just, it's a communication tool to share vision and see where there might be opportunities with some of these groups to collaborate or to build on something that they're already doing, or they can build on something that you're doing.
The reason I raise that is because all of these associations, with the exception of the business association, are appointees of the township board.
Okay. Yeah, and, you know, so I agree with you, but you also cannot intervene. Once you've appointed them, you can't intervene with them, you know? So you want to make sure that you have a vehicle, that you can meet with them to just broadly share vision and create more of a connected community. So this is a part of that ownership linkage that we, that is part of your job. And in the original, so this particular policy was added to address some of the concerns of your different entities just working in isolation from each other. Keep it in?
I can see a meeting like that with, say, a workshop. Invite them in and just open it up and just say, how do you guys see us moving ahead or market township or the colony, or, you know, where is it going to go, or something like that, an open workshop? Or out of something like that, and having more structured meetings.
But they say November here, right? City of November.
Yeah, they love it.
But if you're going to be.
You can do that anytime.
Yeah, but if you're going to be really proactive and visionary, you got to do the chamber too.
I'm just saying.
The HBA and all that.
Right.
You really want to get your arms around the five-year future she's talking about.
Yeah. You just take a group at a time and try to get out of it. If you have too much, you're not going to get any.
Because Nagari Township's not going to allow that.
Exactly.
Do you want to add any other organizations or reference to other community?
Yeah, the chamber probably should be added, like Todd said, because there, we're a member of them now, when we weren't back in 11. And then I called the Marquette Chamber of Commerce, that currently, they're talking about changing their name.
We've been talking about that for three years.
Well, actually, they said it's going to happen this year.
That's what happened.
Why are they inviting them up with this?
We didn't say.
Market Township, Chamber of Commerce, Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah.
But that will happen, but I mean, if we have somebody down at the chamber who's very active and, you know, things happen, so take advantage of that.
So take a look at what I've, excuse me, what I have added here. So I added Marquette Chamber of Commerce and other significant organizations active in the township.
Yeah.
That falls into that calendar I was talking about.
Right. So, you know, maybe you schedule one of the, I mean, you know, for the boards that you actually appoint, you might have one event, you know, that brings all those people together. They're the movers and shakers of the township. You know, and you could, and you could have, you know, each of them give a report, you know, what they're up to, what they're, you know, where they're heading. This, the thing about the 11th month in the fiscal year here, that they're, you know, these groups are going to be invited to give a report, you know, for November, because that is leading up to your strategic thinking. And so if there's something that needs collaborative efforts, that allows you the opportunity to have that input in advance of your strategic conversations.
Do we, we already currently have quarterly meetings that have started this year with the business association.
Okay.
Do we need to, that's something that, you know, I mentioned to them, maybe quarterly, they like that. So we've had two or three?
Two.
Yeah, we have the third one planned out. So that kind of takes care of itself. I did ask the library director to come and start figuring out how either she or some liaisons or somebody have conversation with us. I don't know if it's enough to put that in there. Library gets a couple hundred thousand a year from us. We have no control. We have no vote, no say, no nothing.
We do have.
Well, sort of, yeah.
We have a vote of whether to give it to them.
Yeah, so if you're trying to make this real specific, I don't know if you need to add those things.
I, well, I think we've got the other significant organizations, but, you know, with the library board, they need to come to you and make their case to you. And, you know, so they have an obligation for, if they want money. So they're naturally going to come, I would think, to.
So this is us reaching out to these people.
Exactly, exactly. This is the out-facing part of you. Everybody okay with this, with that addition of the chamber?
Somebody else you want us to reach out to then? We don't have to know right this minute, but.
No. It would be part of your planning, it would be part of your annual plan of work. Okay, moving on, 3.6. The supervisor's role in the board process, basically it identifies that the supervisor has two jobs. One of them is to assure the integrity of the board's process, so that can translate into making sure that you're keeping in alignment with these policies. And secondarily, representing the board to outside parties. And there's a little bit more about running the meetings there. Any concerns about supervisor's role?
Go for it. Hey, don't, you've got something to say, now's the time to say it. Don't be careful.
I have to say goodbye. Five minutes.
I'm sorry you need to leave. But continuing on. So there are duties of the elected department heads also, so the clerk and the township treasurer. We put this in very specifically because, to make sure that it was clear about how the clerk and the treasurer interact with the township manager. Because they are elected operational officers, the day job is an operational function, the night job is board work. We got to somehow, the clerk and the treasurer need to work cooperatively with the township manager, and so, so that there is accountability in the organization. So that's why we have these two policies, or this policy in there, to more clearly identify that, what the role is and how, you know, the relationship works with the township manager.
Now, see, Susan, clerk and the treasurer here both have staff, which really helps the day. So our jobs primarily are policy and the night job for the, you know, other than I have to do elections and such.
Okay.
Treasurer has a staff and just basically we're policymakers.
We're just overseeing.
Yeah, we're overseeing, so usually we don't, our staff deals with the manager. So.
Okay.
We don't do any micromanaging. They know what, and they want to do is they let us know where we're at, and we just ask questions.
Is there any problems?
No, there's, there's nobody.
So I would encourage you to take a look at this language, and is there, do we need all of it? Can we get, is there anything that's not relevant to the way that you're currently structured?
So somebody thought we should add 3714 anyways.
Well, you know, maybe someday, someday if things change, maybe it'd be more relevant. But I think it'd be good to keep it there, just so, just so if there's a different clerk someday, they know.
Okay, I'm good with that.
We just need to take out the provide on the second line, because we've got a difficult word, providing, provide.
I see, yep. Got it. Bye, Bo.
There it is.
Okay. Moving on. The board committee principles. So in organizations that, you know, that actually do have committees, when the board appoints a committee, under policy governance, if the board appoints a committee, that committee isn't, must, can only help the board do its work. The board does not appoint committees to help Randy do his work. If Randy wants a committee, he has the authority to appoint any committee. It could involve a board member or members of the community, it doesn't matter. He chooses if he needs a committee to help him do his work. If the board creates a committee, then the role of that committee is to basically be intelligence gatherers, so that, to frame up or, you know, tee up some kind of discussion so that the board is actually the decision maker. The board committees don't, generally do not make recommendations to the board. They tee up the issues for the board so that the board, the elected body, can have the discussion, the full elected body, and that supports this idea of board holism. So that's a piece. We don't want to fragment the board in any way. And committees, in their traditional forms, often fragment the board, because only a couple people are in on the, you know, are in the loop. because only a couple people are in on the, you know, are in the loop, and they know more than the rest of the board, and that's not a good situation.
But the manager don't have to go to the board, say, "I'm gonna form this committee." He does not have to do that.
No. Township manager can form any committee that he feels is necessary. So, you know, if there's something that he needs to, you know, pull in some community members to get some input, that's perfectly legitimate for the township manager to do if it's an operational issue. Not required, but that's in the authority of the township manager.
I don't think our committees function properly, you know, follow this. Then, if I got here. And that's, I don't think that's a discussion for today, that's when you take it off.
We gotta figure that one out, but that, from the policy perspective, this is ideally what you would want to create with any committees. This is how they should function in a policy governance organization. And then, 3.9 is, okay, 3.8, this basically is the philosophy around committees. The 3.9 is the actual structure. And so, at the time, these were the two committees that the board suggested, you know, were important. But I, yeah, are they still relevant?
This is also part of the Personnel Manual.
I think we need to save this for another day.
Okay. I'm gonna, would it be legitimate to take out these two committees and just leave it with the one paragraph?
I think for now, it would be, like Lynn said, I think that's a discussion for another session.
Okay.
Because the Employee Grievance Committee is actually the Personnel Committee. It's not really relevant any longer.
Okay.
The Rode Commission Liaison Committee, I don't think that exists anymore, so we don't have. You can take both of those off, because they're not there any longer.
Okay.
The paragraph itself is not part of our function.
It's not relevant.
No, it doesn't, we don't operate that way. So, we either need to change what we're doing to operate that way or change the structure and change the policy, one way or the other.
Okay, so, are you talking about 3.8 or 3.9?
3.9. We don't function.
So, if you take, if we take out the descriptions of those committees, what is that you're not doing currently?
Well, that's why I said this is too involved.
Not in my discussion, we don't have the time.
Yeah, we can talk about it.
Okay.
We talked a bit about it before our strategic plan, but... Way too much.
Yeah, because the way policy governance is set up, you don't have committees unless you have something to do. So, I mean, that's, and we really, that's really different than what we're doing now.
We have like 37 different committees.
You could simply delete the two.
You could, you could.
Yeah, that's a topic for a different time.
All right, so, I'm gonna suggest that you guys have a conversation among yourselves, you know, between now and when we meet again, so that we can get it right. And, you know, to delete the two would be a legitimate, a legitimate thing, but if you've got 37 committees, that's a structural thing that you really do want to address.
Well, some of those are statutory, but still, you've got the same people on the same ones. I mean, we've already argued about this.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not functioning.
We might save people a lot of time if we get rid of some of them.
Okay.
Save a couple people.
Maybe that's part of your annual plan of work. Nail that down, get it done, figure it out. Okay, so, 3.10 is the cost of governance, and this is basically referring to the board's budget. So, if you want to bring, you know, like, the cost for my services would be part of your budget, because it's about governing, it's about consulting with you. If you are gonna go to MTA conferences, that would be part of your board budget. If you're going to bring in a visionary or, you know, somebody that's gonna talk to you about, you know, new ways to think about bringing, attracting retail into the community, and they're coming from New York City, their expenses would be part of your budget. So, every year, you want to make sure that you give a number to Randy to integrate into the overall budget. And one of the policies early on is that he has to take that number, whatever you give him, and he has to put that whole number in. He cannot edit it, only the board can, because it's about board business. So, that's what this policy is about. Any concerns?
Also, the clerk and the treasurer have their own budget and that, so we may have to relook at how that's all about.
Well, this would be specifically for board business.
So, and you're talking about would become part of board business.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we just, all we'd have to do is meld all the bud, our budgets together for training, and then that would be the number you'd give to Randy that he can't touch. And that's for board business.
The board part of the council, so it's one there.
Unless the board decides, "We're not gonna need it," we can put it towards something else, right, Susan?
Yeah, right.
Like I did this year for my elections.
Oops.
Now you needed the money.
Yeah, now I needed the money.
So, basically, what this is about is really to make sure that you are investing in your own ability to govern. And if you have a travel policy, travel reimbursement policy, it belongs in here as well.
We do have like mileage forms and such with that, we were, it would go here.
Do you have a policy, or is it just, this is what we do?
No, well...
It's just a chart of a column number.
It's not really a policy, it's just, we have a mileage. I do agree with Tommy should have a policy, so everyone knows what it is.
And everybody approves or doesn't.
Yeah.
So, Randy, if you wanted to, if you could send me what those numbers are, I can put it in the form of a policy and add it in here.
Okay, I'll try to get it in the next few days.
Okay, no problem. Okay, so, we've got about 20 minutes left. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about Section 3 at this point? This really defines how you as a board are gonna be together and what you're gonna be focusing on. Any concerns?
I think the concerns come up was we get more in-depth than some of us.
Okay.
Like tonight, if we're looking at this or thinking about it, we can always mark them down and back to Lynn.
Yep. Yep.
I think Susan wants to have another session with us.
I think we have to.
A couple weeks from now, and that's, we're gonna try to figure that out before we leave, so we'll get calendars together, so.
Right. So, let's try to tackle Section 4. It's a short section, it's pretty straightforward. And so, let's just see if we can do it, and then we will be done with the board's, the board means policies. This is about how the board connects with your township manager and the township management team. So, we're identifying that, you know, you know, what that team is. So, using the word township management, it includes the manager, the clerk, and the treasurer within the scope of your duties and those operational duties. And also, we recognize that the manager, you know, is, supervisor is considered the chief administrative officer for the development of the budget, but, anyway. So, we're just trying to define who we are addressing as manager and management team. That's what 4.0 is, and this 4.0 acts as an umbrella policy to everything else that goes below that. So, in 4.1, the, under unity of control, basically, the only way that the board tells the operational organization to do anything is by an officially passed motion of the board. You can't just give suggestions. It's got, if you expect it to actually be done, the only thing that's binding is an officially passed motion of the board on the township management. And that includes all three of the actors in that, the manager, the clerk, and the treasurer. So, and it goes further on to say, you know, you don't give any, you know, you don't have, you can make suggestions, but they're just suggestions. And if you ask for something that requires a significant amount of time or funding or is disruptive to something, it is okay for the township manager to say no. But if you really, really need that thing, you could bring it to the board, and the board would entertain it, and the board, you know, if there's a binding motion, then the manager would have to provide that.
Well, it really properly needs to be brought to the board so that the rest of the board is aware of what you're asking for.
I agree with you if it's of any significance.
Yeah.
You know, but like, you know, for instance, if you, if somebody's serving on a committee and they go to the township manager and say, you know, "I'd really like a report, you know, of what we did for the, you know, what happened in this committee for the last five years." And the manager is, you know, just getting ready to go on vacation or head to a conference or, you know, and it's not a good time. It's okay for the manager to say, "No, I'm sorry," and then take it to the other route. Okay?
It's fine, my point was that whatever, whenever possible, you should bring things to the board as a whole.
Yeah.
We need to aware of what's going on.
I agree, and it's the board as a whole that needs to protect the township manager's time and prevent fishing expeditions for information that's really not critical to the job. 4.2 is about how you're gonna hold the township manager accountable. And so, if you look at this broader policy, it's defining what the township manager is accountable for and how the management team, what the accountability of the management team is, which includes the clerk and the treasurer. And then it goes on further to say, if you look at the three policies down below, it kind of supports that concept of the only thing that's binding is, you know, an officially passed motion of the board, and it goes further to say that individual board members never give, will never give instructions to persons who report to the township manager, because that's violating that, you know, that it's, they are employed by the township manager, not by the board. So, you want to make sure you have, you don't undermine the township manager's authority and accountability by giving instructions to one of the employees of the township inappropriately.
Question on that, Susan. Now, me and the treasurer have staff ourselves.
Right.
That do, they kind of duly report to us and the manager.
Yep.
But I don't believe I've undermined the manager by asking, like, Lois to do something for me. Usually, I would check with Randy before that anyway, but what do you, what's your comment on that?
Look at 4.2.1B, so you gotta read the heading, you know, 421, and then look at B.
Okay.
It's addressed there.
But like I said, we kind of duly supervise staff, so.
Exactly, so, and that's where this management team concept is so important. You really have to have good communication internally so that people, so that there's alignment and, you know, everybody's clear about really, you know, who they take direction from, you know, who has the authority to give me, give me work. So, it is an internal communication.
And it depends on the scope of the work, too, if you're asking just for a copy of something versus a project.
Yep.
That makes a difference.
Exactly, exactly. But that's, that's an internal issue for the town, for the management team to work through. And if they're not working through it, then it's gonna become a problem for the board. So, you kind of want to, as a board, you want to monitor that relationship.
Let me ask you something, Susan, that I've been thinking, since I'm in the office more, and whether it's appropriate that Randy is or isn't here, I don't know, but it's my working opinion, because it's just me, that maybe the structure in the office should be different. How would I even approach that? Would I bring that to the board if I'm talking about how the staff comes and goes and takes time off and doesn't punch in or out or wears jeans every day or...
That's all, that's all under the manager's, what you've delegated to the manager.
Right, but how is, how would I, as a board member, approach that?
Well...
Say, I'm the trustee, I don't have any different authority than the supervisor or the clerk.
So, right.
Come to the board?
It, well, I guess you gotta determine, you know, is that the board's job or is it the township manager's job, going back to those questions? But if it's about a service, if it's about a service standard that's not being met and the community is being impacted by it, then the board may, has the opportunity, if it so chooses, to create a service standard that would become part of your policies. It might be, it might be ends, it might be executive limitations. It's probably the executive limitations under treatment of consumers or treatment of residents. And so, the board has the ability to create a policy, but the policy would not look like, you know, the staff will punch in and the staff will have a dress code, though that's way too in the weeds. But really, what is the end result that you want, you know, that you want as the standard? Is it, you know, that, you know, staff will not portray less than a professional attitude? You know, I don't know what that would be exactly.
Well, that's if you do anything wrong.
Right. You would address it, though, in your executive limitations, if the board felt as a whole that we needed to create a philosophy or a standard of professionalism in the office.
Okay.
Okay?
So, would I just put that on the agenda or what?
Well...
That's an appropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah, you also want to make sure you, you know, there's an unwritten rule, Lynn, it's called the rule of no surprises.
Oh, yeah.
And you have an internal conversation with the township manager before you make it public.
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying I wouldn't first, but trustees have a feeling that they don't have the ability or the right or the responsibility to come in and make those kinds of comments, so they'll call me.
Yeah.
I am not their boss, Randy is.
Right, exactly.
As a group, is what I'm trying to get across.
I think it's legitimate for you to let Randy know you're hearing comments like that. And, and you can choose, you know, does it need to be elevated to a higher level or not? And the board as a group can decide that.
Lynn, Lynn, if I thought something was a foul like that, I would never call you. And I would never expect you to take my issue forward. I would use discretion and common sense and just have a conversation, professional one, with the manager. He accepts that, that's his job, and he'll do that with anybody on this board. So, common sense and discretion is the guideline.
Yep.
People don't have that.
Well, then they get into trouble.
Well, they come to who they think has the authority to do something about it. That's not an unreasonable request. You have a question. You're saying you can't ask me, you have to go to somebody else? You can't ask me if you want.
If it's a question about what's going on in the manager's area.
Anything that you're not aware of as a new board member.
I'm not sure.
Well, that's okay.
I'm not sure what you're saying. People don't need to go to the supervisor with a complaint.
No, I'm not saying anything.
So, Lynn, I think it goes to the idea of wearing hats, and if, if somebody is bringing something to you inappropriately, if you enable it by intervening on their behalf, that creates, that encourages them to continue to do that. Whereas if you give them the, you know, how do they solve this problem? Who should they really talk directly to? If you help encourage them to contact the right individual, that, that puts the ownership for action on them, and that save you from a whole lot of late-night phone calls.
Go ahead, Lynn.
We have two more policies in this section, and if we can just get them done before everybody takes off, we've got 10 more minutes on my clock.
Yep.
Susan, one of our members is trying to hide under the table.
We can see him.
Okay, 4.3, the delegation to the Township Manager. And basically, this is how you delegate. It's through your written policies. So you have, you will have ends policies and you have executive limitations policies. And the ends basically tell the Township Manager the direction you want to go and what you want to impact. Executive limitations define parameters on, you know, you basically create the playing field that he has to play on, and you're going to monitor to make sure he stays on that playing field. So you use your policies to direct the Township Management Team, and you agree in 4.3.3 that as long as they use any reasonable interpretation of the policies, you will accept that. You have, you as a Board have the ability to say, "A, that's not a reasonable interpretation," and the next policy addresses that. And you can change your policies at any time, but as long as the policies that you have are in place, that's what you, you know, you abide by. And the next policy, 4.4, is how you monitor performance. You know, one of your big jobs is assurance of operational performance, or assurance of performance. And so this idea of monitoring performance is a critical factor for you as Board. So we've developed, you, you have a choice. Every policy that you put in play has to be monitored. If it's important enough to put it in policy, it's important enough to monitor it. There is a particular way that the, you know, to write monitoring reports that Randy would need to master, but you as a Board have a choice to, you know, how often you want to monitor things, you can do, and the method, you can get a report from Randy and look at that report, you can hire an auditor, you can look, go and look for yourself. We call that direct inspection. And you may choose, you know, if there's something that you really think is wrong, you know, you could do a direct inspection, but in general, you would always do, you know, accept an internal report on the policies. Anyway, we did put together in 2011 a schedule of reports, and it is in Appendix A in the back of the book. It's a table that identifies, you know, what month you would be monitoring the various policies. And if you, you know, if you didn't want to monitor the whole policy of, you know, frequently, like for instance, the financial one, lots of people, you know, they say, "Oh, we've got to do that monthly." Well, no, you don't. Maybe all you really want to see is just the financial statement. And so you can identify that that's all you want to see and not a whole monitoring report, because it includes a lot of stuff that you don't need to read every month. So that's what this section is about. And in the, so when you get a monitoring report, that interpretation is going to basically define how we operationalize this policy inside the Township operations. And so if you say it's not okay for the staff to be unsafe, okay, what does that mean inside the Township? Does that mean that we lock the doors, you know, at a particular time? Does that mean that we have bulletproof glass? What, what does, we have locks on the doors, we lock up, what does that mean that the staff will be, you know, never, not feel unsafe? So that's the kind of stuff that gets interpreted, and we, Randy would need to put into a, into a report of how he's operationalized policies. And then also, how would you know that that system, whatever he's doing, that it's working? So you would have to come up with a success metric and show you the data related to that metric. How is he going to measure safety? What's he going to use? So you as a Board have the opportunity then, for every single monitoring report, you decide if the monitoring, if the, if the interpretation of the policy is reasonable. Does the data track that's chosen? Is that in alignment with that, with that interpretation? And does the data show compliance? So those, you know, those are the two critical questions that the Board needs to address for every single monitoring report. Is this a reasonable interpretation and does the data show compliance? You can accept or reject the monitoring report at, you know, anytime, you can, you can accept part of a monitoring report and reject another part. And so if you look at 4.4.2.4, what's on the screen right now, you know, it says the rejection would require a rewrite of the interpretation or a rehab plan for full compliance to be submitted within a specific period of time. So you as a Board, if you see something that's not okay, if you're, or if there's a condition in the Township that does not meet the standard, then Randy would have to bring to you a rehab plan to let you know when it will be in compliance. And you follow up to make sure that that actually happens. So this monitoring concept is a rigorous process, and there's a lot of information here about what you would do in different situations, and this is far more information than many organizations have, but it was intended to be instructive as new Board members come on, so you know what to do with these things. And so that's, that's how, that monitoring function is a critical function, it's how you know everything is okay. And it will prevent you from having to basically, you know, a lot of Boards governed by crisis, this is like an early warning system. You will find, you will learn early on if there's a problem, and, and so you can address it before it becomes a crisis. So when you monitor these policies on an annual basis, or some might be a biannual basis, you are, it's kind of like a vulnerabilities audit. You're, you're taking a look, checking on things to make sure that everything is okay. So this is a critical function, and you really want to take it seriously. And then the last, the very last thing here is about when you do the Township Manager's performance review and contract. And so there's timing there. And in policy governance, the performance review is basically looking at all of the monitoring reports over the past year, and, you know, did we achieve what we were supposed to achieve? Did we achieve what the, the Manager projected would happen in, in the interpretations? So this is all about the monitoring process.
And this December 31 deadline, it actually should be, and we moved it up this year because it's a contract year, but in normal years, this would be by, December 31 would be actually September 30.
September?
Yeah, September 30.
Okay. Great. Done.
Oh, how do, how would we, is there a routine for some kind of penalty to the Manager? Or do we have to wait till the end of the year? If we find that, you know, say we have a new Manager in place, it's their first year, and they're just not doing, the reports aren't right, how, where does the discipline part fit in? Are we?
It's on a monthly basis, if, you know, you know, one of the first questions, in your, in that packet, you have, right after the monitoring schedule, I think it's, here it is, Appendix D. You know, so each month, when a report is given to you, you know, the question is, was it, was it submitted when due? You know, and this is, these set of questions help you think through the report that you've been given. If you're not getting monitoring reports, then the Township Manager is not doing the work, is not in compliance, period. There is another policy that we haven't addressed yet tonight. It's in the executive limitations, under communication and support to the Board, and I'm going to flip back to that in a minute. It's 210, I think.
Susan, would, aren't you really saying that the monitoring procedure or the functions, if we have them adopted and, and in writing, if they're reasonable and adequate, then you won't run into a problem, you won't run into a surprise?
Right.
You should not run into a surprise.
You should not. I mean, some of them, stuff happens, but you, because you're doing, you're, you're checking on things proactively, you know, I, I've got to tell you, it is not unusual when you do this kind of monitoring that something is out of order. But it's better to recognize that before it becomes a crisis and fix it, get, do the rehab plan, and bring it back into alignment with the policy versus not ever even having a clue that that was, there was a problem in the first place. So this kind of monitoring really helps from a proactive place to avoid crisis.
And Susan, you, if we do implement, as you will train the staff on how to do this, correct?
Absolutely, I will. Absolutely.
So they will have the training to know how to do this.
Right. Right. I've got examples, I've got, you know, in training. I think it's very important to meet with the, the senior staff, so, because they will likely be either collecting data or maybe even writing the monitoring reports, but your Township Manager still has to stand by whatever those reports say, and basically agree or not, are we in compliance? So it is, you know, this, this is a process, it needs to be done efficiently. It should not take over your life, but it is something that needs to be done. I have a number of Boards who are actually doing, doing the reviews in advance of the meeting on a Survey Monkey, and it makes for a very efficient way to see the results of, you know, people's assessment of the monitoring reports. But there's a, there's a training period that, that I would like to reserve, you know, if you decide to move forward, I will give you all the support that you could, that you could possibly want or need to make this happen. Going back, though, to the original question, in Policy 210.1.1, that's on the screen right now, that the Township Manager shall not withhold, impede, or confound information, and then you'll see the next paragraph is, he shall not neglect to submit monitoring data required by the Board. And so you've got a policy there, so if the Township Manager is not submitting monitoring reports, you have a reason for discipline.
All right. At 6 o'clock.
Yep. So having walked through this, this particular policies, I, I would encourage you to just kind of reflect on it now that you, you know, you have, you do have a sense of, this is like your job description. So to take a close look at it, think about it, and, you know, is this, feel like this is a manageable or doable thing? Or is there something that we need to delete? You know, like for instance, the committee sections, we can delete those, no problem. And that we need to talk about that the next time we meet. And I also would expect the next time we meet like this, would, we would talk about and complete the executive limitations, which is Section 2, and start dabbling with the ends policies.
About another two-hour session, you think, Susan?
Yep.
About four hours?
Yep. I think as long as everybody reads them in advance and knows what to look for as you're reading them, I think that would, we could probably nail, certainly nail that down.
You want to look a month ahead? Is that too soon, or in the middle of summer, wait till October?
I think we, if we're going to do this, it has to be kind of short.
Yeah, I don't think we should wait till October.
So we don't keep refreshing ourselves.
Well, I thought that was maybe like summer's coming phase, we don't like to do any more meetings.
I was just thinking, maybe another two weeks or something. End of, maybe the week, June 26 through July 2. I don't know what people, what people's schedules are, and we not, might not get everyone here.
Yeah.
But, but you don't have to worry about, if you indicate when you're going to have it, let people make other arrangements with their other social activity.
Well, we've got Consider Policy Governance on the agenda, so why don't we, if you look at your schedules and see what's available in the next couple of weeks, and then we can decide Tuesday night.
We'll check with Susan on our schedule. I think we have a date.
Oh, yeah, I, I am available on June 27th, that's a Tuesday?
Yeah.
Perfect, 4 o'clock.
And if we could do this same time.
Works for Pete, it works for me.
Work for me. June 27th, so move.
Can't move here.
I know you can't move it, but I just tried to get the damn thing moving.
Well, you know what's nice, and I told Lynn this, Susan, is if someone can't be here, but they have access to a computer, I believe there's a way they can actually log in and.
Absolutely. We, you could, all of you could log in from your homes if you wanted to.
So, I mean, it's easier here. I think this has worked well today, in my opinion.
So what's the date?
June 22nd, 4 o'clock.
27, 27.
Susan, I may, I have all kinds of people coming in.
27.
Probably need a break, though. If I get it out, I'll, yeah.
You're saying that's not going to work?
It probably won't work.
Or even just come here for a little, little, if you can get out of here for an hour.
See what happens, yeah.
Anyone else?
Can we try to plan on that?
Yeah, Pete's schedule is okay for that day, I'm okay for that day.
On the 6?
On the 6 and the 27. We'll, we'll make that official at the Board meeting, but kind of put that in the calendar.
All right. Let me know if it, if it doesn't work out and we can play with other dates that, the weeks, those weeks I'm, I'm home and available to do a lot of stuff, so.
Okay.
Okay? Thanks, everybody. I hope you don't have a headache.
All right. Just let me know on that recording, as if you can find it, no.
All right, I'm going to stop it right now.